Like this, if he's a member of I T E and he's submitted studies and reports to I T E on this subject, but Eric, could you give a little overview, please, of what you've done and what your preliminary conclusions are regarding traffic? And then I'll come back up here and we can move ahead.
Good evening, Eric Goss, from Traffic Planning. This is actually, I think it's closer to 500, I think, in the past 20 years. Close enough. So, as was indicated, we did take preliminary look at this. We work with the property of Ryan Good all the time, a preferred developer for Wawa. They were estimating early initially to evaluate the amount of traffic passing by a site which they're descending to Wawa and determine where enough traffic to go there. Because, as you know, and I'm sure everyone who knows, you know, Wawa is heavily relying on pass-by traffic, which is the amount of traffic passing by the roadway because that's their customers. You know, 76% of the traffic entering a Wawa is already on the road driving by. If you drive somewhere nearby, there's Wawa on the way out, stuff there for gas, coffee, whatever. It's a little louder. Yep. Sorry. So, that's the benefits that we see with a Wawa development. It doesn't generate a whole lot of quote-unquote "new" traffic. 76% or so pass-by traffic, traffic on the roadway. So, we did take a preliminary look at it, and I know a question came up with regard to access to the bypass. We did reach out to PennDOT early on, and it was emphatic no. In fact, PennDOT indicated that numerous people have approached them to gain access to, direct into the bypass, and they have not granted that, been doing anticipated. It's a very secret bypass, and they don't want to incorporate a lot of different access points along there. So, we do have the two access points on Lower Silver Lake Road in the right hand, just south, I'll call it east, of the intersection, and the full access driveway opposite the church. And this allows people to get in from the bypass quickly, circulation in through the gas pumps, and then have the driveway a safe distance away from bypass that they can then make movements into and out of there to go back to the bypass. That's going to be our approach to on Lower Silver Lake Road. So, we will be evaluating those driveways with respect to site distance, whether a turn lane is required, and we will all that with our traffic study. And then regarding the intersection, you know, we look at impact to the intersection based on the amount of traffic. Again, it's a lot of pass-by traffic, so although you're not adding a lot of new traffic, you do have some new traffic patterns that are created with people coming into and out of the sites, and that would all be evaluated. And we did identify some improvements we can make from Lower Silver Lake Road to increase capacity there. Here, on the opposite side of the bypass, there's two left turn lanes that are shared with a through and a right. It's already a split-phase signal, which means that one side of the road that goes, then our side of Lower Silver Lake Road goes, has all the green arrows, balls, and everything. To take advantage of that, we can widen Lower Silver Lake Road a little frontage and provide that same pool of term combination coming from the sites on there. So, that is the main improvement that we're looking to incorporate. We do many of these projects throughout southeast of Pennsylvania, Delaware, Jersey, everywhere. It's, you know, we focus the type of exposures of pass-by type of use on the subject quarter and what improvements we can make there in the traffic flow.
Yeah, Mr. Fiddler, that's the initial presentation. And so, comments from, or questions, we'll do the best we can to entertain, to the extent that we can, we'll be able to provide the answers. I think we probably can answer most of the questions. Hence, the focus here, of course, is on the use, not necessarily operational aspects, because one of the things I neglected to say, we talked about submitting an ordinance, Mr. Sanders called me and said, "Please make sure that in your ordinance, you propose that this will be a conditional use," as most of the uses are in the O R district. And that's the way we craft it. So, when you, if that were to come to fruition, a lot of the operational issues, of course, would become subject with the condition use here in, or the board would have the ability to approve, to impose any of those conditions. So, it would just be a landing of the plan, as we envisioned. There would be two, two bites at the end.
What I would propose, how we proceed, is if there are questions from individual members of the planning commission, let's get questions addressed, and I'll come back and call the commission as to whether there is a position of support or lack of support or don't want this anyway, anyhow included in Newtown Township as your comment. But I think it would be fair to the audience as well as the applicant to hear some of the questions that may come from us before we actually venture our, on a qualified opinion as to whether this is appropriate or not in Newtown Township. So, I'm going to, Larry, do you have some questions for the applicant at this point?
Yes, and the, I guess it would be the westbound bypass, the left turn into, onto Lower Silver Lake Road. Is that deemed, that turn lane deemed sufficient enough to handle traffic to turn into Silver Lake Road?
Well, to carry on, we haven't done the formal traffic study yet, because we still don't know the current use here. I'm not sure to the extent to which G P D has done all that work already, but.
I mean, we did some preliminary work on that and found that stacking distance for the queue to be acceptable. Again, we have the full-fledged study. If it does need to be lengthened, certainly something that, you know, other thoughts there.
The, with regards to the property exposure along the bypass, I would much rather see a more natural landscape. I like the idea of a white fence, but I'd rather see something more natural, I mean, the shrub or space, trees or space, the, you know, mountains and that. I would like to continue the kind of overall look of the bypass it provides and have more natural landscape, trees, more trees, what has space, your regular kind of, or a more natural scene.
And I will say, there's nothing in line. Therefore, the address of landscaping, I mean, that's generally a subdivision landing of a tissue. I would react from that subject. So, I have a grid of landscaping, I had a criteria, and we had full, with, I have full with the cell or the buffer requirements for your ordinance.
Anyone else, Larry? Eric, you can come back.
Sure. I'll pass. All right. Paul, first go around.
Questions, comments, not to jump on Lawrence's comments, but I have the same note. I understand that large trucks would not be able to fill up or would be discouraged from filling, but clearly you're going to have a number of truck drivers who are the only ones that can sandwich or drink. And the plan does not show parking for those vehicles. Is that something that can be accommodated? How would you accommodate?
That is something, you know, that's been a subject I, I know the board's handled that for a number of applications, and F P D's involved too. There are some instances where the board wants to be requested to provide truck parking. And those instances, and those implications where he ended in providing, and that is actually their preference because it discourages them to come in. As a practical matter, it hasn't generated a lot of problems. You will find some where there are truck parking facilities. Generally speaking, from my observation, they're not at all, they're not really well, they're not filled up. But, you're right, I mean, they can, in theory, come in.
I mean, my concern is.
Excuse me, Jason Corzio.
We don't provide any truck parking per se on the site, but there is, the drive aisles around the Wawa are all oversized. And the one along the canopy is 35 feet wide. If, in the event that a truck was to come in, they would be able to park along that frontage of the canopy and still have enough room to pass vehicles in and out of there. If you're thinking of, like, the average landscaper, who might have a trailer too as well, the, that canopy is very convenient for them, because they have two fueling spots there that would basically be able to accommodate the truck and the trail.
My concern really are for quarry trucks, the semis. And what I, what my true concern with this is, is, you know, I've worked in New Hope for many years, and I know the Wawa there is not comparable to this, but what you typically get are trucks just parking right on Bridge Street. And what I guarantee you'd have here are parks, trucks parked on Lower Silver Lake Road and then walking into the facility. I don't know what can be done to prevent that from happening other than, you know, the township ticketing. But I think that's a real concern that would need to be addressed. You know, if you discourage the trucks by not having parking on site, they're still going to come. You know, that's, it's Wawa. People are going to want their Wawa, so they're going to stop on the way down I-95. I'm not looking for an answer, I mean, just.
No, I understand the concern. We probably can, can give you some information on the further depth of the road, because, again, like, from there with several sites, I think there's a new one on the Gert Road in the Warwick, and there's a lot of various parking there for trucks. And I've been by there a couple of times, and I've heard yourself seeing trucks in. There's a little down Bend Sail, it really doesn't have truck parking, and you'll see trucks parked, Long Street Road, you'll see trucks parked on the site. So, it's, it's interesting, but generally speaking. I think the experience has been that you don't have that problem, but we try to convince you. I mean, the bridge street, I'm not sure the bridge street is, as you said, not a comfortable solution, because sometimes cars can't, you find parking spaces.
No, understood. But you're still getting a lot of the trucks, that's where they park, so I can see that happening. And I'm just going to run through these.
Sure.
I don't know if there, I know that there used to be crosswalks across the bypass, certainly down by Summit Square, and that was eliminated, so I don't know what the, the concept is there, but I would imagine people would like to access this site from the other side, from the commons, where sidewalks and pedestrian traffic has been encouraged with recent development. So, again, I don't know if this makes sense, but perhaps the consideration of sidewalks along Lower Silver Lake Road and improving a crosswalk there for people to get from the commons to the Wawa.
And there was a discussion, I know that the board, at preliminary, at least discussed pedestrian access issues. That's a concern.
With regard to traffic, one of my concerns is heavy advertising for this site off of I-95, encouraging people to come off. I don't know how that works. I don't know how you get a sign on I-95 to say, because I've seen them where, you know, there's a sign letting people know that there's a Wawa at this exit. I'd like to not see that, and I don't know how that can be.
Now, that there's a sign says, "Full gallop," is that considered, right?
Yeah. But, again, that's, I'd like to not see that. I don't know if that can be a condition of this, or if it can be imposed somehow. I don't know how I can control that, but I'm just putting these comments out there so that they're on the record and considered later. Signage, it would appear from your plans here, you don't have any plans to advertise pricing?
We have to advertise pricing. That's a state requirement. So, signs would have, signs would have pricing on them.
Can you, and I know this is very preliminary, but can you, can you give where that would be?
I'd like their whole thing.
Maybe not so much.
No, they're not.
But I believe you, you can say, yeah, the location, and that there's another one here. The planning committee's made the counter, the shutdown, the line.
Sketch plan, and signage is obviously an issue that has to be addressed, you're right, that's a good recommendation.
And I understand that, and my concern with regards to signage is that the, J M Z O at this point does not allow digital signs.
That's the issue.
Do you plan on having a digital sign, or would you be agreeable to?
We, we feel we have to have digital signage, but we will cover that at the ordinance too. But I respect your concern. I, it's hard to do the gas signage without using digital signs, I think, it's pretty difficult. Pricing changes all the time, basically.
We've had, we've had other gas stations in town, ones that are located in the borough, sort of close to the borough, that wanted digital signs, which have been rejected with a reason for that. And I have a real concern about allowing it here and then telling the other gas stations who are now going to be competing with Wawa that they can't have. So, what's going to happen is it's going to spread. So, my comment on the record, again, I'm not very opposed to having digital sign. There are other mechanical signs that perhaps could be used that will allow for the adjustments without breaking or changing with that, that will, that's all I have for now.
Peggy, do you have some questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have some comments I'd like to make. First of all, a zoning change to the jointure, especially to allow the gas stations and convenience stores on bypass is, I don't even want to go into my feelings for that. We had worked on the planning commission and the township for years to protect the bypass from development. It's a green space. It is meant, you drive down the bypass, coming into Newtown Township is beautiful. You change the zoning there, that's the downfall. You want to see the result of poor zoning drive down Street Road in Betsy on Township. I don't think people want to see the bypass changed like that. There's a Wawa four miles away. I mean, Mr. Baylin, you've been around a long time, you know the history, you know the history of that parcel, what we have denied there, and now Wawa just wants to come in and, and change the whole flavor of the bypass. And I think it's, first of all, to add this in the jointure, I can't see Upper Mayfield and Wrightstown agreeing to this. Why wouldn't they? This would allow, we can, gas stations could go anywhere in the O R district. I mean, why, why this board seems to be in such a rush to jam a Wawa up there is, I don't understand.
But one of the things you look at is how many different sites would qualify, right coordinates in such a way. Well, first of all, there aren't that many fake O R sites. Secondly, right coordinates in such a way, there aren't that many corners that are under development. That's the second. Thirdly, it's always an issue, once you look at it, you're not going to, if you have one there, you're not going to get one right next to it. That's just not the way it happens. And I don't think there's any ground to book one right next to it. But you, you know, you know the ground of one of that, there's better than I, probably. There's not a lot of, you know, seats for them.
Anything else?
It's not a matter of feeling or what could occur. Are we supposed to say, are we supposed to say yea or nay? All these things are out of, out of zoning compliance? We're supposed to say yes to some?
No, you're not. You're not. And that's why, that's what I said, it's not a sketch plan, really.
No, no, no. Why, they educate me. I'll declare my arguments. All these things are out of compliance, the zoning issues. So, what would we say yes to?
My question before, in my view, if I could summarize, the reason we were sent here is to get your feelings on moving ahead with a draft ordinance that would enable this develop, not whether or not you'd support all the variants, because at least preliminarily, we were instructed by staff to move ahead with the ordinance concept rather than the variants on you. So, you're creating a planning issue rather than a self-hearing condition.
Right, and I think basically, what you're looking at is the review comments by consultants for the township, which don't have any standing for binding in a sketch plan. That part of the review process comes through the land development, if it ever gets to that point. Staff did identify the issues that they felt needed to be addressed. We were challenged or charged tonight to go through all of those consultant reports and opine on the worthiness or the merits of those changes. We were asked to give our comments regarding our support or lack thereof, or questions of the use being proposed on this site. I do have some questions, and I'll move right down the line. You talked about pass-by traffic being the driving focus for 76% of your volume. Yet, I've been to Wawa locations that are in commercial districts that are anchored by Capella's, Lowe's, Home Depot, Red Robin, all kinds of retail consumer shops. As part of that development, a pad site was identified and Wawa moved in. So, to say that, you know, I was questioning, what percentage of your Wawa experience is in standalone locations that are not in resident or retail districts?
I'm sure Eric can answer that, but I think he's going to tell you the majority of them.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah. We actually performed the study for the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the early 2000s, the original study that was performed, and subsequently.
Eric, you want to talk about it?
Yeah. It was subsequently adopted nationwide, and we counted and performed numerous studies, questionnaires, and, I can't even tell you, it was so long ago, but numerous, numerous standalone Wawas. And we provided that data to I T E, Institute of Transportation Engineers. They've collected data from around the country regarding that, and it's based on the standalone use and determine based on questionnaires of the actual customers and counts of the actual drivers of standalone Wawas. That's the 76%. That's the published data, it's been accepted.
You know, as long as you're confident, I hate to see an investment not pan out for any company coming to Newtown. If you're telling me that you're going to count your, your apples as pass-by, pass-through business, not directly stopping in addition to shopping at Lowe's to get a Wawa coffee as a significant part of your volume of future business, so be it. The other question that I had regarding your usage, I didn't see charging stations for fuel-efficient and electric cars. Is that being proposed?
I don't know that they have a lot of, they're really soon to get just yet. Maybe down the line, they'll be looking at it, but right now, we're not proposing it.
Part of the reason, Mr. Fiddler, I, that's been asked in other hearings that I've had for a while. And the short answer is, supposedly, the average visit is probably five minutes, and you don't get a lot of charging done in five minutes, as distinguished from a shopping center where you can, where you may be parked to shop for a couple hours. I mean, that's the short answer. I'm not sure that's the total answer, but.
No, I don't think it's a total answer, John, and I think it's Royal Farms' model said, "Oh, look, putting charging stations because it takes 20 minutes." You can come in and get chicken, a sandwich, eat your lunch while your car is charging, and off you go. So, in that model, it seems to work.
On my list, or less.
Yeah. To me, if you're moving into the 21st century, fuel-efficient energy issues are important.
Absolutely.
The other question that I had is hypothetically, we're creating in the jointure, a use in the O R to allow a E-25 use. Do we run the risk, or does a jointure run the risk of being challenged on spot zoning? You create unique scenarios that only one property qualifies in the jointure for the use. Some day down the road, the use is still prohibited conditionally in the jointure. Some smart attorney comes to an applicant in Upper Mayfield or Wrightstown and says, "Hey, maybe we could get a reversal of this restriction of only having the E-25 use conditionally approved in the O R." What about the V C two, which is in Washington's Crossing at the corner of 532 and Taylorsville Road? Or the Five Points at Wrightstown? I don't want to be putting the township or the jointure in a position then by crafting something that benefits the applicant, puts the jointure and the future of our communities at risk.
So, the, the jointure certainly has the ability to decide they'd like to expand the use. I mean, I don't know what the jointure is studying today. I don't know what their original thinking is. But I propose an amendment from project that uses my perspective. I'm not going to be presumptuous enough to try to tell the municipality, or in this case, the jointure, where they would have permitted use. That's not my job. Or the extent to which they ought to broaden the initial proposal, that's a broader planning issue than, than I would undertake or that my client would practically take. But, it's a legitimate concern. I think it's a legitimate comment. I think the concern as far as the, but first of all, it's not a sponsor. I, I speak confidently about that. I've had a lot of sponsor cases on, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't take this one on a sponsor basis. The, the other thing that you have is you have different criteria that apply, and I know Mr. Scheitman and Mr. Sanders have some positive township awareness, but substantive challenges to non-residential uses are evaluated by different criteria than substantive challenges to residential exclusions, for reasons that make a lot of sense. Not every municipality has to have every non-residential use. You're allowed to go study a little bit broader area, we'll take a look at that. A lot of factors, but it is very hard to win a non-residential exclusionary challenge. You'll find very few cases where that's happened, with the possible exception of quarries, but then they got, and then Bobby got the N P C amended to provide, you have to provide for water, mining, and uses. But, generally speaking, I don't believe it's a concern, but again, you had counsel to advise you with respect to those issues.
Mr. Chairman?
Those are only my questions.
Part of our review of the ordinance that we were asked to partake in is to see if there's any other areas in the jointure where this use should be located. And it's something that this planning mission will review.
Okay, add a future date.
It could not be, that's your issue.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all my questions. Yes, Elizabeth, more for you.
Andrew?
Sure, 60 seconds. I mean, I have a comment and then a question. My comment would simply be, I'd echo that sentiment said before, it's about the beauty of the bypass. I moved to this area for that, to get away from the Wawas and the gas stations where I was looking before, and I'd hate to see, like, Street Road and other things like that. So, I mean, I love the drive-in bypass. I'd also say, traffic, I really want that looked into. Coming towards 95, you have, to 95, you have, you know, pulling off into, into the Wawa, and especially during commute hours, those traffic lights get backed up pretty, pretty well. And I can see the Wawa, all the traffic spaces being filled, and I'm concerned about what happened to them, people pulling in, there's no spots. I, I'm not sure it's enough room. I really want that looked at. Also, the speed limit on the bypass. You know, so when it's not busy during commuter hours, people will exceed that speed limit, it's just how it is. And I'd be concerned about people pulling off, trying to slow down, make that right onto Silver Lake, with cars coming at even faster speeds than the speed limit. You know, by the neck, you have issues too, coming around that bend. I just, I worry about the safety. Question for you, is this a 24-hour Wawa that's being proposed? I'm sorry, 24 hours?
Yes.
That's it. Okay. Jerry?
I've got a few questions. You mentioned before that the traffic light pattern will be changed on the other side of the bypass?
No. What I've indicated is, the way the traffic light exists today, you have, it's called split phasing, meaning the opposite side gets a green arrow and green ball, then it goes to red. Silver Lake Approach gets a green ball, a left turn arrow as well. Because you have that, that phasing is in place because you have, the approach opposite the site has a left turn lane and a shared left through right turn lane. So, it's a dual-left movement, it needs that split phasing. We're able to take advantage of that existing phasing and mitigate on the site side to provide dual-left traveling, so to speak.
I'm trying to figure out whether that would affect the traffic going on to bypass from Newtown, from the Wawa.
No, it shouldn't affect that whatsoever. Because it has its own green time, and it goes during its own phase, traffic, what we're doing is increasing the capacity on our site side.
You go on the right, but you're going to decrease.
No, we're increasing it by providing more lateness, not by providing more green time.
Well, I've gone to that light, the green time there literally is three seconds.
Three seconds.
That light will turn yellow before you even step on the gas pedal, so it is going to have to change.
Right down.
Okay. That is exactly what you said. If it lasts three seconds, that's not long. And what approach are, is it three seconds?
I'm sure you're trying to get on bypass, trying to get on bypass.
And I think that goes back to the whole traffic engineering of the bypass when the initial PENDOT evaluation of the control mechanisms for the intersection were proposed to be controlled by the township or by a time clock based on the trip generations at peak hours. So at peak hours, the duration of green time for crossing onto the bypass and running the bypass is maximized. The rest of the time during the day, you get four cars crossing the bypass before the signal changes. That's just the way PENDOT does it. And I don't know if the township is in a position, or has ever considered a position, to say, we need more flexibility in the sequencing of cross-traffic for local residents that are in town during business part of the day. Like you say, if you're going to St. Mary's, don't get eight cars behind the intersection. You'll be there 10 minutes. Hopefully, it's not an emergency.
What's fortunate in Pennsylvania is that traffic signals are good and maintained by municipalities. You have the ability to propose changes to that.
It all comes at a cost.
I understood, I understand that. We can certainly look at it in conjunction with your engineer and our traffic study.
I think signal time is something we always look at.
Oh, yeah.
If you do the other math, you're saying, okay, I've got 58 parking lots which are going to be used. You say, okay, I'm going to get, let's just say 60 for round numbers. If you take 15 from each direction, which is being, which is probably not going to be adequate, probably get 20 from the west, 20 from the east, 20 from the north. You're potentially going to have 15 cars backing up, stacking up, trying to make a left hand from the westbound lane.
That's right. That stack is, I go by that pretty much every day. And that'll back up beyond.
That'll back all the way to the left.
And then you've got, yes, and then you've got problems because the two lanes comes pretty fast around the bend, but it's going to be.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Jerry, go ahead.
What's the, is this a typical size Wawa? I noticed that you've got, what?
Sixty.
Let's see, six pumps? Dual-sided, look, dual-sided.
Sixty pumps. Eight pumps.
The answer to that is yes, it is. It's a standard prototype, it's not bigger than the normal.
How many sizes do you have?
I would say there's five.
I think there's only three if I remember correctly.
And the overall lot size for this size, is that typical?
This is much bigger. Much bigger. Most of the sites are somewhere between two and three acres.
Correct. This is five acres.
This is five acres.
This is up front, back Wawa too as well. There's an entrance on the front. Yeah, I thought so.
And you've got one pump per lane, one on one side as opposed to side by side. Typically, they have like two inside.
They have four, so some of your GS stations have two on each side, two pumps on each side?
Some of them have two pumps, not, and four spaces basically under in each location. What do we have here?
We got sixteen fueling positions, so there's eight pumps. You have a tire stop, different sizes.
So you have eight pumps?
Eight pumps.
With not four, but two?
No, there's four.
One on each side. That canopy is known as the stack eight.
Four sets of two pumps, not eight in a row.
So that's right.
That's what shows. We've got several. On the elevation on the three yard park, this plant range, there should be six single pumps in the road.
But the plan would have, if you see the threshold, it would be the source.
I have a question, Jerry. What about the people that live back there on, on Silver Lake Road? How's this going to affect their quality? You have a 24-hour gas station, lid off of the traffic that is still in the way.
Well, first of all, I think in the traffic studies, you'll see there's going to be very little traffic generated and it's going to be back in that area starting. Secondly, I don't believe that that lighting is going to be visible. First of all, it can't extend off the site according to your own criteria. And secondly, the canopy stops any what you call halo effect up in the air. The canopy is very effective. I invite you, if you're concerned about lighting, one of the sites right out in the open, you'll see on your road in warm, Jamison itself, Jamison is a new one. And it's got no, very little limitation, right? It's in the open, you drive there at night, it's very, very foggy.
Got to check that out.
You can tell it's there when you get there, but it's not bright.
One last question. The elevation of the site in that initial look, it's fairly high. It's like a berm.
It's high now, and we'd have to get a PENDOT approval to shake it down.
So is the entire site that high, or is it just a berm?
There's a lot of fall across that site, starting from the north corner at the intersection, down to the southern corner where the Silver Lake Road right away, people property. There's probably 20 feet of fall across the site.
There will be a lot of creating after, if you know the weather. That's a fair statement, yeah.
So you'd be clearing out, removing all trees and everything?
There are not, there's not a lot of trees on that site.
Not volunteer trees issue, if anything, they're not very.
It's not woods.
It's vegetation. It's not.
Vegetation.
It's vegetation. However, in its habitat, it is a natural elevation.
There'd be a lot of this site that is not really affected by this site plan too. I mean, we're not developing the entire site on a flat area.
You got a waterway located also on the southern corner of the property, the 100-year-old fluke lane for the waterway?
It's not on our property.
It's not, how close is it to it?
It crosses around the people, on the people property. I don't know, it's probably within feet away from our property. That whole corner of the site we're not developing, it's remaining as natural as it is.
Well, you don't think all the clearing, it's going to have any effect on that?
For now, it's a handful and then clear in that corner of the site.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Hi, I was, John, did you say you're going to get rid of that berm along the bypass?
I didn't say we're going to get rid of it. I said that the proposal would be to.
Well, picture looks at.
To reduce this deelevation of the site, that's what we're just trying now. And we had to bring it down because of the.
Too steep for a parking area.
I changed the PENDOT right away, so we would have the approach PENDOT to get department to do that.
So it's about 10 feet of difference from the bypass, let's say, to where the fuel pumps will be? And you're planning on getting, I'll stop saying getting rid of, so you're planning to raid, to remove about eight feet of that or so?
Sounds about right.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, now's the time. Jerry, what would be your statement on the recommendations you had to the board regarding this use at this site?
Is that Jerry?
I'm Larry. You don't get the votes.
I am in favor of having Wawa come to Newtown. I personally use their facilities weekly for fuel, for to eat. It's a great company. I just don't think that this location is the most desirable for Newtown. I think that approving this application will or could set a precedent for future development along the bypass. I think that the township holds as well as the jointure is to preserve the bypass and to keep it zoned for the areas that it's zoned for. As was stated earlier, the bypass is kind of sacred and I would like to keep it that way. If I were to make a recommendation, I would not approve this application.
Thank you. Paul?
So my understanding is what we're really being asked is conceptual, you know, are we okay with the concept of what's being presented here? I'm not commenting on the ordinance and what effect that might have. I don't think that's before us. The way I see it, this is land that's privately owned, it's going to be developed. Yeah, of course, we all would love to keep everything pristine, but if you look at the bypass, it is developed. If you go onto the north side of the bypass, starting with the NAC, there's building after building, they're properly screened and it looks good. I just don't, I don't have that same concern. I think there are very few locations where you're going to get a lot of additional development and I don't see this creating some sort of domino effect. So with that, I do have some concerns. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the signage. I'm concerned about drawing a lot more traffic off of I-95. I've mentioned those in my questions and comments before. Concern about the trucks and I'm going to reiterate letters comment, I'd like to see some more landscaping and understand that that would come. But overall, I actually, I'm in favor of it. I think this is a good location for it. Again, it's up there to learn more about traffic. But I like what they're proposing. It is an attractive site. I think it's a service that the township and the surrounding area can use. I think it would be nice to have some competitive gas prices in the area. What I'd like to see tweaked a little bit to make it more friendly, sidewalks, work up parking. Those issues will come later. As far as concept, I'm in favor of it.
Peggy?
I am not in favor of this location. I am not in favor of creating a new use to allow the gas stations and commuter stores. I think we're setting a precedent on the bypass that we will regret.
Okay. Jerry? I'm this way.
Yeah, I have some of the same concerns as Peggy, but I think that, as Paul said, it's going to be developed at some point. However, there's a possible solution in maintaining the look of the bypass and still having a Wawa on there, I think we should consider it. If that lot's larger than your typical lot, if it can be pulled back from the bypass, maintain that berm, you don't really know it's there. I know that's not good for marketing, but believe me, when you put a Wawa in the area, the word's going to get out, you know, you're going to get the business a much more subdued presence on that corner as far as people driving by. Maybe you maintain the overall look of the bypass with the Wawa.
Andrew?
I'd have to stand this time. I think it's too early to even say anything. I mean, I'm too concerned right now about traffic and safety and the look of the bypass is huge. Again, I'm a case study, came here for this open road and Newtown Township in general. Came from an area that was undeveloped, slowly, and it just dominoed that and so that concerned me. But I'm going to have to stand for it.
Okay.
All right. I would say I'm not in favor of just, because I can't ignore that all these zoning issues that are there and it's not my, it's not our charge. The other safety aspect, I just kind of put that is, another thing you may want to, if it does go down that path, you have to consider it is, kids are going to fish at the pond right there and they're going to walk over to, they're going to cross that field and try to cross that traffic to a Wawa. So if there's a pedestrian safety, that's something that's actually going to have to address. There aren't, no kid's going to walk all the way over to that crosswalk. They're going to cut right by the, right by the bypass. They're going to take the path of least resistance, the shortest distance. And they're going to go from that pond to the Wawa. And they ain't going to watch. They're not going to watch any cars migrating off the eastbound lane or anybody racing to be the red light from the westbound. So I'm just not approving, I'm just not having, those two items are all. That's it.
I'm torn between this particular application. I've been around long enough to know that the bypass is safer. The economic viability of our business commons is important, the quality of life, but property rights also have to be respected, the right to develop. Do I think this is the best use for the site? Definitely not. Do I think that the jointure is running a risk by combining convenience and fuel services at the same location? I think we aren't. That being said, I would love to see Wawa as a standalone retail spot without fuel. I know they don't want to do it. They say, oh, it's not the business model. If your convenience store in Wawa makes great coffee, great sandwiches, do they really need the petroleum products as a come-on? I don't know. I don't know the particulars of their business. I like the separation that the jointure has endured with over the last 25 years. It's worked. I think it should continue to work in the future. All right. Any other closing comments?
You know, I'd like to make one comment about, people always saying the Newtown, the gas Newtown is high, it's high. The Newtown gas station owners do not set the pricing, petroleum companies that they, Sunoco, whoever their gas station is, they set the prices according to demographics and according to zip code. So if a Wawa came in, you will see the Newtown price is going to probably be the same as a Wawa. I see in Ben Salem, I stopped at a Sunoco on Street Road, right across the street, the Sunoco was one cent less the Wawa. So don't blame the gas station owners in Newtown for their pricing.
Any other comments for the applicant? Very none. Thank you, Mr. Van Lubenay.
Thank you.
Public comments will be at the conclusion of our meeting regarding this applicant. I had said at the conclusion of our regular business, I will take any questions directed to the commission, not to the applicant. I didn't want to get into a contest between the applicant and a premature venue and passionate people in the audience. There are passionate people in this commission and I think we want to follow a modicum of the core regarding how we treat an applicant in front of us. That being said, we would want whole business. New business. Under new business, I understand on our August 7 meeting, we already have an agenda item which will be a PRD application from Acadia. Move on. A new residential use on Buck Road and the bypass. But you'll, you'll hear again. Move on to subcommittee and liaison reports. Linda?
I'm here, but I don't have anything new to report.
And you did not have a work session last night that was canceled?
We did not, it was canceled, that's right.
Okay. And at your next meeting, you will be selecting a supervisor.
Well, we will be doing interviews tomorrow.
Interviews tomorrow?
Interviews are tomorrow and we will be selecting a new supervisor, yes. I don't know exactly the timeframe, but I assume it'll be pretty soon.
It's going to be done by the 30th.
Yeah.
That goes to the making decision.
Correct, so.
Okay.
It's imminent.
Zooming council. Chester did cancel the July meeting. We are scheduled for our next meeting, I believe, in August. The same ordinances that were under consideration are still on the table.
Correct.
There's been no movement. As a sidebar, moving jointure. As a sidebar, moving juncture zoning ordinances through the process is hard for us and it can be years before collective minds come together to agree that it is best practices to move it forward. So fracking is an example.
Right, yeah.
Mark?
Hey. How are things? Yes, we met last week. We moved the AT&T at Coonan Corner, had a corporate logo change. Sign's actually a little nicer than what it's there. We did approve that if it gives importance to that. And one thing, and I wanted to mention to you, Alan, you know, the saloon is apparently under agreement sale and the carriage on the front of the saloon. Now, I had mentioned that you had taken my belly stowaway.
My carriage house is full of my Conestoga wagon. I haven't had a room for any more carriage.
Well, we do have the carriage that is on the side porch of the saloon restaurant that is in severe disrepair, so we are actually on the hunt for someone maybe to.
Interested in trying to repair or restore it.
Restore it. He got it in a burrow. They just have that place to put it.
Where are you going to put it? Is it tall ass?
No, we're there.
That's not, no.
We'll think of something.
Okay. Parking rep. Larry, anything?
No, our next meeting is in September.
September. EHC, I think Shannon's not here, but there was a presentation at your board meeting last week about some EHC events coming up, about Birdie?
Yes, you're testing me now. I don't have the dates with me, but yes, there is a movie, I believe, going to be in town.
Movie on Birdie Autobahn Society.
Correct. It's actually a very interesting program that they present.
Yeah, I think since September. Okay. Greg is on vacation. Do we have any planned expirations?
Although we don't, we just do a little bit of time. Academy three and four. We have a deadline expected for that.
Okay. All right. Actually, now we have public comment. So if anyone has issue to come before the commission and express your opinion or comments regarding the Wawa presentation, this is the chance. I just ask you to either sign in or identify yourself so it can be reflected in minutes. As I said, the real forum for discussion points could be the board of supervisors. You have prime time TV. Here's your dis.
Prime time TV tonight.
Come on out and identify yourself, please.
Michael Horrible, Newtown Township. Just a couple of comments. I'm not opposed to Wawa in general. I am opposed to this potential process of going through an amendment process. I think they should be forced through the zoning hearing board. The amendment process, I think, while it won't result in technically spot zoning, it will result in great opportunities for future developers. Just looking around at a couple of properties right in Newtown, I was a little bit confused, one, about this property that you're proposing development on right now because it's listed online for sale. It's a 9.7 acre property for sale right now for $4 million. That's up online right now, that property. Other properties that I would also be concerned about potentially being open to development if, if this amendment process goes through. I realize this is more supervisors than the planning board, but the Newtown rental center property currently for sale, 3.25 million, that's another great property for development. 826 Newtown Yardley Road, that's Zone O R office research, they're actually 14 acres of property. I'm sure First Evergreen Properties would entertain offers because they had an approved plan for the medical arts building for, I don't even know how many years, you can't read the signing boards, almost rotted away. That they would be, that property to me is a property that could be developed, similar to the property in the Chaminde, that sale on the Rise of Wolfheart, where you have McDonald's, you have Chipotle, you have Starbucks and a bunch of other properties. I can see a whole strip of development go right into that property. And then I keep hearing comments about the church. And so I looked at that property as well and my understanding is that the church property is 14.7 acres and there's a property, a 3.9 acre parcel right on the corner of Lower Silver Lake and Silver Lake Road in the bypass. And while I'm sure they have no interest in developing that property, if a nonprofit were to receive a cash offer for a property that, that could set up that church in perpetuity. It would be, often that would be hard not to entertain. Those are some of my comments, just about the general surrounding area. So I'm not opposed to Wawa. I am opposed to going through an amendment process versus forcing a developer through the zoning hearing board process. You get the variances, hey, you know, power till you build a Wawa by hobby, you know that. Just quickly on the property itself, I think sidewalks are necessary. I know you made a comment regarding kids coming across the bypass. I agree with you 100%. I believe that kids will cross that bypass. They will not take that path that runs down the road, under the bridge, to the pond and to Wawa. No way. Red light, we run. You know, that's, kids are going to do that. There's no doubt about that. So I mean, you know, expensive alternatives are to tunnel underneath the bypass, developer suspense, or the bypass. I'm sure those are not, you know, favorable ideas to anybody. I give the, I realize the cost involved with that, but I think it's, I think it's an issue to have development at this property. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Here you go. All right. Biggest to the best. Biggest development, Bucks County. More residents than Newtown Borough. Okay, I was taking notes while you guys were giving the comments and stuff. I know you're all volunteers and I just wonder if it's just your opinion that you give and not that of your neighbors and other residents you may have to talk to. Because I talked to a whole bunch of people, you know, about things, especially as Wawa. If you don't know, you know, a month forward, you don't want to hear that, but you can tell from my comments. Okay, I heard about landscaping. Of course, they'll bring that up if, you know, if the thing progresses and everything, but anything has to look better than the unruly vegetation that's there now. You know, you make it, really make it look nice. You put a fence, it's good for safety. Put shrubs in front of it, makes it even nicer. You know, a lot of questions were about the trucks and things like that. I worked over 17 years for Big Box on Oxford Island Road and I watched them build the super Wawa there, right next to the little convenience store that they had at one time. It's now a, very sound place. And you don't see any trucks coming down. You know, delivery trucks, you really don't see any trucks coming. So I watched them build that thing. We had a little convenience store, it was just like the one in Ridgeford, was overloaded. They needed something larger and, you know, they put super Wawa there. Gas was cheap, lowered the prices. You know, I know about this zoning and everything from the, from the gas companies and all that stuff, but they see what they did in Ridgeford. I mean, that's a, that's a real gas war going over there now. I mean, and the prices dropped. Ridgeford had the high prices also and that's the cheapest in any area now, the gas prices One of things was billboards on 95, which is no longer 95, it's 195. I don't know how much traffic is going to take off, what's the, that bridge done. I don't think this can make much difference, but I have never seen a billboard that said, wow, my next exit. I've never seen one. I've been traveling down to DC, used to travel down to DC a lot. I've never seen one, you know, Maryland, you know, anywhere. The old adage about bypass being sacred and all that stuff and building on bypass and no. You guys know, there's hardly any land for purchase on a bypass. Unless you get some large company wants to spend millions and millions of dollars knocking down stuff. I doubt if people would sell their houses they knocked down, you know, all that stuff. There's hardly any land on bypass at all.
Come on, John, you're losing viewers.
No. Back to zoning and everything. I mean, they went over that, that last shape parcel. They built office areas, did some office research. You would be able to put, wouldn't be many employees in that office and who wants to build an office there when you go in the commons and you see all these vacancies? They said, we're even the surrounding townships and stuff, there, there's too many vacancies. So, hey, a lot of people would like to see it, you know, stay the way it is, but hey, they would see the way it is. Like I always tell people, by the lane, you keep it, do anything you want with it now. By the lane, you keep it with the unruly vegetation. Yeah, you mentioned you don't want to maybe mess with the townships and you mentioned Five Points in Breaks Town. I mean, you have bank there now, there's two gas stations here now, it's a GBS. Yeah, there's this farm over there, but hey, like I said, the owner of that property wants to sell, he's going to sell, then they could, you know, decide what to put there if they could get it through. Traffic, traffic's not going to be any worse than it is now. Rush hour gets terrible, but any other time, it's not that big. You know, after, you know, when I left the job at the Big Box, I was driving for Chanda Hall for a while. So I drove the area and about the four vehicles getting through to make the turn on the bypass, yeah, that's true. And, you know, you catch somebody sleeping and then, you know, by the way, for these tells, they can tell you corrupting the city because you're there with the horn. Just not that many cars get through. Talk about, you know, what you want to do with the land, Mr. Fitter. You know what the planning commission did to you when you wanted to build? And I think I even remember it, even though you're not, you weren't that close to bypass, but they brought up the, oh, bypass is sacred and you were down the road. You weren't near the bypass, close to, but not that close. But, you know, what the planning commission did to you. Matter of fact, the one guy invested away now, an Italian last name, he's from North Jersey, New York. He's a DJ on the side. He was Paul Jones, because he seemed to told what the city did to that land. And, you know, hey. I wrote some notes and I can't even understand my own writing. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Here you go. Any general discussion this evening? Oh, we have one? Yeah, okay.
All right, with the Hinesburgs deal, I'm not going to speak, we're starting to make it quick and short. Last meeting for supervisors, you guys talked about 2,500 cars coming to Wildhawker every day. 26, 24% of the experts have 600 cars going to bypass every day. That's their, that's their track gap thing. How many acres are left on this parcel that would the profit go on? This is the land to the right of their actual proposal. What they would do with that land, could be open gas station. An example, Wawa on Street Road with, with Philmont, Wawa's dead in there, they put a Wawa on that corner and it's a shop that's right next to it. That's what's starting to come in this town. That's all.
Thanks, Rick. Don't be shy. Last call. Anybody else?
All right, I'll get out. That was my brother. Obviously, we are passionate. Thank you for doing your job. My name is Eileen. I'm also a business owner with my brother, Rick. We did business since 1970. I really appreciate everything you guys do and I love Newtown. I love Newtown. Born and raised, live in the borough. And I like the green. I like seeing growth. I like seeing the beautiful homes coming into Newtown and going in a positive direction. And I do understand that and appreciate us being where we are and I always try to, you know, keep it green and make it not look LED lights and shiny and flashy. Yes, I would like a small, open LED light and you guys shock me down. I respect that and I stand it. Do I agree with it? No, but that's life and I'll do what you guys want me to. And I've tried so hard to find a regular open sign and if you guys could help me with that, I'd really appreciate it because I've shown my brother that there are no open signs anymore that are LED. And anyway, I wasn't going to bring that up, but since I'm here, I'm going to bring that up. So I just wanted to thank you and, you know, we always want to do what the township wants us to do and, because we want to stay where we're at. Thank you for the community always embracing us again since 1970. So thank you for your time.
How you doing? My name's Dave Moore. I live in Newtown Township. I was owner of business in Newtown. Been in the same place for 43 years. Alan, maybe you can, or Jerry, or John, maybe you know, is this the same exact parcel of property that George Stockburger was going to develop?
It's part of it. Stockburger had the entire 9.7 acres, not that great.
So he knew, we knew there was not going to be anything else other than a car dealership?
Stockburger had an easily rig with P go across.
Okay. Well. I guess, I just think it's kind of ironic that somebody that was in business for 70 years in Newtown tried to do something that would be a lot less impact on traffic on the bypass. His father owned the business. He ran the business for 40 years himself and he is the son of the business. And they tried to go out there and do something that would have a lot less impact than what this is going to have on traffic, on the rest of the town. Not changing the subject, folks. I've been in business for a long time and when a new customer comes in, they move into the town, all Newtown grand people move in. I ask a long man, can you move to Newtown? And the same word comes up all the time, the quaintness. It's such a quaint place. Newtown's such a beautiful place to live. Over the last 25 years, the quaintness has been getting sucked out of Newtown at such a rapid pace, you can't even keep up with it. It's kind of sad to me that somebody like George Stockburger that did a lot for this community for 70 years couldn't build a car dealership out there. But we're even thinking about possibly letting something that would impact the township, the traffic and the whole town, much, much worse than the car dealership would be. And it seems like the township supervising board, not you guys, but the supervisors, are trying to push this thing down their throat. I was at the very first meeting when the Wawa thing came up. Alan, you were there too. And it was like it came out of nowhere, but two of the township supervisors knew more about Wawa than maybe some of these Wawa executives that were here today. It just, it just, it's, I'm not impressed by what's going on, not one little bit. I just want to make, I just wanted to say my piece. I've seen a lot going on in Newtown. I think if we let that happen at that intersection, it's going to be a domino effect and we're going to have Street Road, Route One, the whole nine yards right here, quaint little Newtown. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you all for your attention and your courtesy. We are adjourned.